If I could ask everybody to take their seats, we're going to get started this evening. Once again, if you wish to speak this evening and you haven't done so, we have speaker forms in the hallway. We would ask that you complete a speaker form if you wish to speak this evening. My name is Jim Rowan. I'm the Administrator with Colrain Township, and I welcome you this evening, and thank you very much for your time. This is a very important decision for the trustees, and we really look forward to your input this evening. I would like to introduce those that are here today. First, to my left is Larry Barbier. He is the Township Law Director. To his left is Catherine Cunningham, and she is Special Counsel regarding this Rumkey case. We have Dennis Dieters, Board of Trustees, Melinda Reinhart, President of the Board, Jeff Ritter, Vice President of the Board, and Heather Harlow, Fiscal Officer. At this time, I'm going to call Ms. Reinhart up to call the meeting to order, and we'll get started. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. First, I'm going to call the meeting of July 21st, 2014, the Colrain Township Board of Trustees Special Meeting to Order. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Just some ground rules here. This is not going to turn into a melee. This is going to be orderly and peaceful, and we are not going to interrupt people while other people are speaking. If people have a problem from that, then you will be asked to leave. But we are going to calmly discuss this tonight. I know this can get a heated topic here. We're going to try to keep it calm. First, Mr. Barbieri is going to give us a short presentation about what the settlement actually is that is proposed, that we're eventually be voting on. Then, Mr. Rowan will also be speaking briefly about the financials. After that is when we will be taking public comment. As you all know, you filled out a sheet when you came in tonight. Mr. Rowan will be calling you up one by one, at which point you will come to the mic. You do not have to state your address, as we usually do in meetings, since it is televised tonight. You only have to come up when your name is called. We ask you to stay to five minutes. The clock will be on the projection screen over there, and once your time is up, we ask that you please have a seat. Also, tonight, we are only taking comment from Colrain residents and business owners in Colrain Township. That's why we had you mark that on the sheet. If you are not one of those categories and you still wish to make a comment, feel free to contact the trustees, either by our own voicemail or email, or there's also a special website that the information will be provided as well, that you can contact us and leave us a message there. But tonight, we are only taking comments from Colrain residents and business owners tonight. At this time, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Mr. Ritter?
Aye.
Mr. Dieters?
Aye.
Mr. Reinhart?
Aye.
Melinda? Before we get started, there's more people here, including myself, who are kind of have to lean on something. Do we have the podium go down here so we can lean on?
Sure.
Can't sit here and talk.
He just wanted to know if we push the podium out so that people who aren't sitting on their feet would have something to lean on. He said yes, so, okay.
Are you trusting?
Yes, can everybody hear me? Quiet down, please. When people are speaking from the audience, we're going to move the podium out to where the microphone is, so that the people can put their notes on the podium and lean on it if they need to. So, we'll try to make it as accommodating as we can for everybody when they give their remarks.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for attending tonight, and for those of you who have responded and offered us feedback over the last couple of weeks, I really want to thank you and tell you how much I appreciated it. This is not only one of my most difficult decisions as a trustee, but one of the most difficult decisions in my life, quite honestly. So, I appreciate it a great deal. For those of you who are signed in to speak tonight, I would encourage you to make your comments directed at the question at hand, which isn't whether the landfill is bad or good for Colrain, or whether it's been here long enough, but really gets to the issue of the risk of going to trial versus the potential benefits in the settlement. In other words, a lot of the people that have responded to me so far, along the lines of landfill's bad for Colrain and expansion's a bad idea, say no. And to that, I would say, I agree. That's why I voted against it eight years ago, and that's why we fought this in court for the last eight years. But that's not really the question at hand. The question is directed at the risk of going to trial, where we could potentially lose and end up with nothing. We'd have, you know, 40 to 50 more years of landfill and only 25 cents a ton in terms of revenue. So, try to make your comments compelling to the trustees tonight, give us information that's going to resonate with us to make a decision. In other words, something along the lines of, "Mr. Ritter, I'm willing to accept more property taxes in the years ahead if we lose a trial," or if we don't accept the settlement." Think about all the issues that the trustees are thinking about, such as the makeup of a potential jury. We'd be lucky to have one person on a jury from Colrain Township. The rest of it would be city and other municipalities in Hamilton County, who probably think it's a groovy idea that all the trash comes to Colrain. So, think about all of these issues in totality, like the trustees are, and that's going to help us make a better decision then. Thanks.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I would echo trustee Ritter's sentiment. It's a testament to this township that we're all here together. This is about our community. This is about our families. Let's not forget about that. This is our decision to be made. I will remind you, or you'll hear from the Administrator tonight, that this is, the decision won't be voted on this evening. To that end, I've met with a number of community groups. I am willing, at your convenience, to be anywhere in the next few weeks before the actual vote is made, to have this conversation with you, because it is something I think is paramount to the future of this township, how this decision comes down. So, I need to hear from everyone if they have a voice. So, please contact me. I'll be readily available. I'll pick up the phone and get right back to you and have the conversation. With that, I'll turn it over to our Township Law Director.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. This is a very important evening, and we're glad that you all came. The trustees always envisioned that we would reach this point for the public hearing and get to listen to the viewpoints expressed by the public. My name's Larry Barbier, and I'm here as the Colrain Township Law Director this evening. In addition to being the law director, I'm also one of the counsel that are defending the case. Catherine Cunningham, who's a zoning lawyer, a lawyer of many areas, but specializes in zoning, from Columbus, is also co-counsel and lead counsel on the case as well. Let me talk just for a minute about how we got to this point, because this isn't a situation where the trustees all of a sudden started negotiating in secret with Rumkey in order to try to reach a resolution of this case without input from the public. It was always contemplated, and in fact, it's required, that the trustees would listen to the public and would listen to the input from the public before making any decision. And I can assure you, the trustees have open minds at this point. How we got to this point is that Rumkey approached Colrain. After eight years of litigation, they approached Colrain with the possibility of a settlement, and they laid out the structure of a settlement that they were proposing. Knowing that at some point in time, we were going to have to come to the public to discuss the terms of the settlement, it was decided, well, let's see if we can sit down and get the best possible deal to provide to the public for public comment before we have this hearing. So, what was done is Colrain Township representatives and Rumkey representatives spent two full days with a paid expert mediator in order to craft out the consent decree that we have here today, which is heavily negotiated. The trustees did everything they could to get all the controls and all the money they could in return for the concession to allow the expansion of the landfill. That being said, it was never a question as to whether or not they would have an open mind at the time they have this public hearing. Of course, they have an open mind here this evening. But before we presented this consent decree to the public for public comment, it only made sense that the deal be the best deal there possibly could have for Colrain Township. The trustees are the stewards of this township, and in every lawsuit, I've been a litigator from in my 37th year as a litigator, and that's all I've done, is be a litigator and a law director. And during that period of time, every case that I've ever litigated has a point where you have to discuss settlement. And you've probably all heard, 95 or 97% of all cases settle, and that's because cases have real risks. But sometimes, you can't get the settlement that you want to get. Sometimes, you can't get a settlement that gives you what you need in order to away with the risks, and the case goes to trial. I've tried many cases. And we're not here because the township or the lawyers are afraid of trying this case. We're here because we've gotten the best offer that we think we can get from Rumkey, and we're here to discuss whether or not it's up to, whether or not how the public feels about that. Now, I can tell you that as a law director for Colrain Township, I believe this is a good settlement, and I am recommending it to the trustees. I can also tell you that the trustees have an open mind and are going to listen to your remarks before a decision is made on August 5th. I'd like to start by just discussing a little bit where we are and how we got here. You can see from the board that this case was filed in March of 2006, and April of 2006, actually, in March of 2006, Rumkey applied for a zone change. The zone change in 2006 was denied, and then in April of 2007, the lawsuit was filed. Now, you can see that the township has been fighting Rumkey on this issue for seven years, and has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars doing that for seven years. And in fact, you can see from the PowerPoint, at some point in 2010, Colrain almost lost the case. The judge in the trial court ruled that Rumkey was a utility. Now, what would that mean? If Rumkey is a utility, the township has no right to control it at all. Not only did the judge rule that Rumkey was a utility, the Hamilton County, the First District Court of Appeals affirmed that ruling. What did that mean? Well, that meant that Colrain Township would have gotten nothing more than the 45 cents per ton that they were getting from Rumkey, and that Colrain Township would have had no right to control Rumkey whatsoever. And that's where this case stood until Catherine Cunningham was able to get the case reversed in the Ohio Supreme Court. Now, I will tell you that it is very difficult to get a case even into the Ohio Supreme Court. I think they take about 5% to 10% of all cases that people try to get into the Ohio Supreme Court. In this case, the first time they considered it, the Ohio Supreme Court said, "No, we're not going to take it." At that point in time, we had a situation where Rumkey was a utility, and Colrain Township had no right to control it whatsoever. However, on a motion for reconsideration, the court turned around, and on a 4-3 basis, allowed Colrain Township into the Ohio Supreme Court, and allowed, and then reversed the decision, and so now we are where we are. The case did not end that way. But you can see, when I say that litigation is uncertain, you can see what I mean, because Colrain Township was an eyelash from losing this case back in 2010, and now we're at a point in 2014 where, instead of having no controls and being offered no money, the township is being offered approximately $2 million a year and substantial controls over the current landfill and the future expansion. So, that's what was accomplished by going to the Ohio Supreme Court. But as I said, as you know, litigation is very uncertain. I'd like to talk a little bit about the legal issues in the case, because I think that's going to be important in order for you all to have an understanding of why we are where we are. This is not a simple matter of saying, "Do we want a landfill, or don't we want a landfill?" The reason I'm recommending settlement is because we have risks, and there are legal issues in the case. Now, I can't talk in too much detail about the legal issues and what I expect to happen in the case, because this is a public forum. We don't know what's going to happen at the end of this public hearing, and if we go to trial, I don't want the judge reviewing the video of this and having me say things that are not going to be favorable to us in trial. So, I have to be very careful what I say, but I am going to give you some broad propositions of law, just so that you know what it is we're talking about here. First, we start from the proposition that people and corporations have property rights that are guaranteed by both the Ohio and the United States Constitutions. Both the Fifth Amendment to the United States Constitution and the Ohio Constitution say that people's property rights are inviolate, and they cannot be taken away without some kind of due process or without compensation. Now, townships do have a right to zone, but townships only have a right to zone to the extent that the zoning bears a rational relation to health, safety, and morals, and to the extent that it does not cause a taking of somebody's property. For example, if you have a house and there's a lot, there's two empty lots next to you, and they have nice trees on them, but they're owned by somebody, well, you can't go to the BZA and say, "Well, I don't want them to develop those lots. I have a good view out my window." If the township can't just zone and say, "No, you can't develop those lots." People have property rights, and the zoning has to bear a relation to health, safety, and morals. In this case, we have a balancing act. The township has taken the position that we don't want any more landfill in Colrain Township. Rumkey is saying, "We want to be able to develop our property to the best and highest use that we possibly can," and we think that's to have the landfill, and it's not really an expanded landfill. It's, the landfill's going to stay about the same size, it's just going to be for a longer period of time. But they want to be able to use the landfill for a longer period of time. So, we have Colrain Township saying, "No, we don't want any more landfill. We don't want you to use your property for this reason." Rumkey's saying, "Yes, we should be able to, because it's our property right." So, that's really what this case is about. The complaint that Rumkey filed has asked the court to declare that the zoning is unconstitutional. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is because this isn't just a simple matter of the Colrain Township trustee saying yes or no to the expansion. If the trustees say no to the expansion or to the new landfill, then we go to court. Well, the judge can still rule that the zoning is unconstitutional. If the judge rules that the zoning is unconstitutional after listening to the evidence, what then happens? Well, Colrain Township again loses all the controls that it's going to have under this consent decree, and I can guarantee you that Rumkey is going to ask for millions of dollars in damages. So, we're talking about, as I said earlier, risks versus rewards. We have a proposed settlement here that applies immediately. Keep in mind that the landfill as it exists now is going to last approximately another 15 years. The settlement that we have, some of the important controls are, first, with respect to the current landfill, those 15 years will pass before there is any new landfill, any new dumping in the landfill. So, in other words, nothing is really going to change for the next 15 years. However, these controls begin immediately, and the cash payments begin immediately. Now, I'm not going to discuss in detail what the cash payments are, because Jim Rowan is going to talk about that when he talks a little bit about the township finances and what the cash payments will mean to the township. But I want to make this really clear, because this is something that you need to understand when you're looking at this settlement. I'm sure you're going to approach this with an open mind, and I want to make sure you have the facts you need to make whatever judgment it is that you end up making. The current landfill, which is projected to last about 15 years, is not a part of this litigation. So, there is nothing that we can do in the trial of this case that will have any impact on the current landfill. All right? This case is not about the current landfill. It's what happens 15 years down the road that this case is about. The first and important control that is immediately present is that there will be no dumping of waste in the area in the northern part where the chemical reaction is. That's something that without this settlement, there's no way the township can get that. And actually, that's something that would have allowed Rumkey to maybe go even a couple more years beyond the 15 years, because that reaction has caused such a diminution in the trash, and it's lowered it so much that there is a lot of room to dump on top of that. However, the concern was that, from the trustees, and this is something the trustees were very concerned about, the concern was, well, if this reaction stops, if we can finally get this reaction to stop, and then more waste is dumped on top of it, that may cause it to start again. So, the trustees, you know, one of the things we were charged with is, if there's even going to be any consideration put to settling this case, right out of the box, you have to get an agreement that they won't dump any waste on top of that chemical reaction. And that's something that Rumkey has agreed to. So, that's something that we can't get if we go to trial, but that's something that we got as part of this consent decree that Rumkey agreed to. Now, of course, Rumkey has also agreed to be making monetary payments immediately. And I know, you know, you've probably seen that the monetary payments are going to be about $1.5 million per year, plus an increase in the tonnage fee. And in fact, what the township did is, we actually incentivized Rumkey to decrease the amount of waste that they put in the landfill, because if it goes below 1 million tons a year, it's currently about 1.5 million tons per year, if they go below 1 million tons of waste a year, the payment goes down to $750,000. So, what the township has done is incentivized Colrain to put less tonnage in the waste, in the landfill, and then their payment goes down, which I'm sure is something that most of you would probably be in favor of. There's no inflation kicker in this. It's simply a flat payment of $1.5 million, plus approximately $400,000 in additional money that will come from the tonnage fees. And the reason for that is, one, we negotiated, we tried to get more, and Rumkey wouldn't agree to any more than this. But, two, keep in mind, the expansion isn't going to occur for 15 years. These payments start immediately. So, the township will receive $30 million of this money approximately before we even talk about the expansion. So, keep in mind, both the controls and the money that the township's going to get start right away, whereas the expansion won't start for 15 years approximately. Another agreement that was received was that the expansion will not exceed 1,109 feet above sea level. Again, that's something that the EPA does not regulate. They could have gone approximately 200 feet higher than that, which would have made the expansion last considerably longer if we had not been able to negotiate that term and that control. The hours of blasting will be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The blasting will be monitored by an independent seismic consulting firm. An independent engineering firm will survey the area approved for active landfill and set boundary monuments and certify landfill is within approved limits. A crucial control that the township is going to get is, with part of the money that is being paid to the township, the township is going to hire a consultant. A consultant, and this is going to be an engineering person, who is going to serve as a liaison between you, the residents of Colrain Township, and Rumkey. And as part of that agreement, Rumkey has agreed to give this consultant access to records, access to the plant, and access to their officials. I know one of the things that you all have complained about, I've been the law director only two years, but I've been to enough meetings to know that a number of people have complained, and one of the things I've heard is people complain that they really don't seem to get responses when they make a complaint, or that it's hard to get through, or it's hard to get action. Well, the township, with this money, one of the things they're going to do is hire a liaison. And the liaison will work for the township, but it will, the liaison will have access to Rumkey. Rumkey has agreed, and that's in the agreement. Rumkey has agreed to give them access, and this liaison will respond to your complaints and will get action from Rumkey. That's going to be this person's job. And the person's going to be set up to do that, to help you get action, to help you get your complaints taken care of, and to help you get the kinds of answers that you need or that you want. So, this is something that the township has committed to. It's something that Rumkey has agreed to, and it's a way that the township believes immediately it can start better acting upon the concerns of its residents. I said earlier that I, as law director, am recommending the settlement. Again, I'm not doing it because I think landfill is, an expansion of the landfill is necessarily a good thing for Colrain Township. I know the trustees have often expressed that they don't want the landfill to expand. That's not what they're looking for. The reason I recommend it is, it's my job, I'm a fiduciary to the trustees, it's my job as law director to make a recommendation based on what I view the risks and the rewards to be, and it's my opinion that this settlement is a good one, that we've reached a point in the litigation where it's a good idea to settle it, and that's why I recommended the settlement. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Rowan, so he can talk a little bit about the financial impacts of the settlement.
Thank you, Larry. What this chart illustrates here is, when we went into mediation, the board had some major concerns that they wanted to address, should a settlement be considered. And Larry's talked about many of those. One was the underground reaction, recognizing that that reaction is what creates most of the odor that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, and until that reaction extinguishes itself, we're going to continue to deal with that regardless of the expansion. The second part was looking at the proposed expansion and what kind of controls we can put in, such as buffering and blasting. We're sensitive to what that landfill expansion is going to look like, from planting of trees and the buffering necessary around the perimeter. The control component, as we talk about the restrictions on blasting, the liaison to provide access, the height limitations, not putting additional garbage over the underground reaction, those were all important control things that we wanted to make sure we got included in the consent decree, and recognize that if this goes to trial and we're not successful, we have none of those controls, and that goes back to some of the risk. Now, obviously, financial gain is a positive to the township. There's a number of needs we have, but it's not the only reason to settle, and I don't want anybody to think that, you know, that's the driving force behind this. I think any one of those elements up there that would have been removed from this proposal would not have made this a good settlement. But from the financial perspective, based on the 1.4 million tons received last year, we received approximately $638,000 in tipping revenue. The three-year average has been 1.6 million tons. The high was in 2010 at $1,009,000. So, if we go to trial and we lose, then we will, our tipping fees will drop eventually once the expansion takes place and the current landfill is closed. It will drop from $638,000 down to $354,000, and that would just equate back to the 25-cent statutory tipping fee that we would receive on the expansion. If we win, then ultimately, when the landfill's closed, that $638,000 would go to zero, because no additional tonnage would be going in the landfill. The financial gain through this settlement, as Mr. Barbier had mentioned, is a $1.5 million base annual payment, an additional 25 cents per ton on the tipping fee. So, that would allow us to go from the current $638,000 per year up to 2.4 million, almost 2.5 million a year, should we settle. So, those are the four major components that we really took serious as part of that mediation. We recognize that any type of a settlement, there would have to be significant financial gain, but at the same time, we need to have the controls and the access and do whatever we can to protect any further landfill expansion on the existing underground reaction. So, at this time, we're going to transition into the public comment. Just to point out a couple of things, the mediation dates were on June 9th and 16th. We started the community outreach program when we posted the consent decree online July 4th, and continuing to take public input through the end of the month. We do have the telephone line set up, (513) 385-7500, extension 50141. Those voicemails are being forwarded to the trustees, so they can actually listen to those comments as they weigh their decisions. The email line at rumkey@colrain.org has been set up. I've probably received close to 300 emails. Those have also been forwarded to the board. The decision that the board will make will occur on August 5th at 5:30 in the trustee chambers. That meeting will not be, there will not be any public input at that meeting. It'll be a deliberation by the board. So, I highly recommend, if there's any further input by those here this evening or those that could not make it, please provide that input through one of those methods, either through the 385-7500, extension 5141, the rumkey@colrain.org, or by calling any one of the trustees individually. And then, as Mr. Barbier had indicated, the trial date is scheduled for September 22nd in Hamilton County Court. So, let me just take a few seconds here to get the podium put in place, and we'll start the public
At this point, at this point in time, I'd like to ask Jim Lay to come to the podium.
Thank you. All right. Is this on? I'm not hearing a lot of sound here. Are we on now? Okay, great. Thank you. My name is Jim Lay. I'm a resident of Colrain Township, and I serve as chairman of the board of the Colrain Chamber of Commerce. The chamber was founded earlier this year with the mission to support and enhance the economic development of the community for the benefit of businesses and residents. In our first few months of operations, we've had 60 businesses and individuals join our efforts to help our community thrive. Our mantra at the chamber is simple, strong business, stronger community. We believe that the ability of local businesses to grow and provide jobs... Oh, huh. One minute. Okay. It's not usually a problem for me. Okay, would you like me to start again? Okay. You're going to give me a re, okay, Jim, thank you, a reset even. All right. Whoa, now I have to change the whole perspective here. My name's Jim Lay. I'm a resident of Colrain Township, and I serve as the chairman of the board of the Colrain Chamber of Commerce. The chamber was founded earlier this year with the mission to support and enhance the economic development of the Colrain community for the benefit of its businesses and its residents. In our first few months of operations, we've had 60 businesses and individuals join our efforts to help our community thrive. Our mantra at the chamber is simple, strong business, stronger community. We believe that the ability of local businesses to grow and provide jobs helps the residents of Colrain Township experience a quality of life that they seek and deserve. The relationship between business, the community, and elected leadership must be effective and collaborative as a partnership. Tonight's hearing and the proposed agreement, we are here to discuss, is all about that collaboration. We believe first and foremost that our community's challenges and opportunities should be decided by those within our community to ensure the collective good is primary to those making the decisions. That's the first of many reasons why we're here this evening, to express our support for the proposed settlement. Let's consider a few key thoughts that led our board to resolve to take this position. First, I want to acknowledge that we, as a chamber, are potential beneficiaries of the settlement. The fact is that the board and chamber organization were in no way aware of this possibility until the proposed settlement was announced. The funds that we would receive upon acceptance of this agreement will be used to enhance the quality and success of our business community, and that will be an outcome that will be to our benefit as a community. Rumke has been, Rumke has been part of our community for many years. Theirs is a business that embodies the spirit of entrepreneurship that's essential to the health of our community and our economic system. Their president, their presence in Colrain Township has not been limited in any way to just locating here and operating a business. They have been and continue to be active investors in our community, not only in terms of jobs, but in terms of the support they provide in reinvesting in our community's schools and amenities. Many of us in our community pride ourselves on the belief that government needs to have a lesser rather than greater role in how businesses operate. Too often, we find that business is unnecessarily and overzealously constrained from things such as hiring additional workers due to increased regulation and intervention by government. We know that many of those in our community wish that the landfill could be located elsewhere, but since it's here, we seek to limit its expansion. While understanding that feeling as citizens, we also recognize that the landfill is here, and the opportunity rests not in attempting to halt their operation's growth or shut it down. The opportunity that exists is to create a collaborative agreement that manages the expansion, mitigates undesirable side effects of its operations, enhances and expands new business development, and allows Rumke and the Colrain community to coexist in a productive partnership. The two parties involved, Rumke and the township, have worked for many years to seek a solution to this challenge. This has been a difficult process, and the stops and starts, costs and energy put into this effort have been significant. This settlement is the result of much hard work, and as the chamber, we want to thank both sides for their diligence in reaching this settlement. Thanks to their efforts, we have the opportunity to assert full control over our community's interests. We appreciate that the parties have found a way to prevent this agreement from being crafted by a jury of folks throughout Hamilton County who do not necessarily share our values, concerns, or perspectives. This agreement comes with a level of pain for both parties. That's what describes a successful negotiation. Both parties gave something to the other that they wished they could have held on to. That's what we wish we would see more of in government at all levels, intentional efforts to solve problems instead of obstructionist politics and serving of narrow self-interest. That pain, we believe, must be shared by the community. This is not the ideal outcome for any of us, but for all of us, we believe this is the best possible outcome. That's why we wanted to be heard this evening. Support for this settlement provides the best possible outcome for the community as a whole, and this agreement has been reached because those with local interests, conflicting as they might be, got together and found the best way to put the rancor behind us and move forward in the best possible fashion. We ask you, the trustees of Colrain Township, to unanimously vote in favor of this settlement, and in doing so, establish a path to the future as partners in building a stronger Colrain Township. Thank you for the time this evening.
Just hold in the butt until it turns green.
Is that working? Yes. I'm a lifelong resident of this township. How can I follow what he just said? I support him. Ladies and gentlemen, if you know anything about litigation, it's a, it's a very chancy thing. My, the way I see this, in 15 years, you're going to be back in here bickering over the same things. You enjoy your fire department? You enjoy your police department? You enjoy how your roadworks are completed? If you don't take this agreement and we lose, then start talking about layoffs, because that's what's going to happen, because that's where the money's going to have to come from. Like I said, I can't pretty much follow what he said, but, thank you.
I would like to support Rumke in this, in our township. They've been very good neighbors for us. In my opinion, it's a win-win situation. Without their agreement, Rumke will have pretty much free reigns, the way I look at it, and I just want to support them. Say, "Go Colrain, go Rumke."
Thanks for having this, thanks for having this meeting tonight. My wife and I have had property out in Colrain Township for over 30 years, and we've lived down the road for 27 years. We're in favor of the settlement. In fact, we think it's more than fair to the township, the amount of resources that Rumke establishment's going to provide to the township. Rumke has been here many years prior to the majority of the residents in this township. So to say that they're a bad resident, I think, is false. They were here far before any of us were here. I believe a lot of the conflict is the NIMBY syndrome, not in my backyard. Waste has to go somewhere. And a lot of people here would like to have it, you know, trucked 100 miles up north and dumped in somebody else's backyard. In far as waste sites go, this one is pretty well managed. From my professional career for 36 years in U.S. government, this one is on the top of the list of waste disposal sites. Again, we support this settlement.
I'd like to call again Dan Temming, 5546 address.
Well, thanks for the early call. I wish it had been a lottery ticket. I won't need all five minutes. Here, because I know all the panel, I know Larry, I have professional dealings with him in the past, he's a great attorney. I know all three trustees. And I've been on the zoning commission here for about 10 years, and was a member of the zoning commission when the hearings were going on relative to the zoning. I had to recuse myself and could not participate in that because I had a business relationship with the Rumke companies, which I still maintain today. So I do not have an opinion as to whether or not the settlement should be accepted or whether or not the township should go to trial. It would be inappropriate for me to state a position on that. But I do have a comment I wanted to make about this process. And my comment is that whether the case is settled or whether it goes to trial, come what may it trial, what happens with the landfill, whether it's expanded or not expanded, will determine the fate of this township for the next 50 years. It's a long time. And while I know that the trustees have put their heart and souls into this issue that's been before them for all these years, and while this is a magnificent turnout of citizens in Colrain Township, I do not believe that this is a statistically reliable sample of how all the township residents may feel about this issue. And so my comment is simply this, there is a very clear choice for the township. Just two months ago, they had a very clear choice as to whether or not to pass a levy for the police. And that issue passed by less than 20 votes. So there was some passion on both sides, and I'm sure after that vote was decided, there were probably 21 people at home who opposed it, who thought, "Man, I really wish I'd gotten to the polls and voted." So I personally believe that a ballot is the true leveler and the true way to determine the feelings of a community, because it is the only way that the trustees or any governing body can get a true pulse for how a community feels about a given stated issue. And if, if I may, it's not a popularity contest. You have a very clear choice, and I commend Mr. Barbier and the trustees for getting down to the nuts and the bolts and the nitty-gritty to come up with very specific terms that people can very specifically understand. And the proposed consent decree is on the website. Everybody can go and read it. And if you haven't read it, I encourage you to do it, not once, not twice, but maybe three times, so that you understand what's there. And so my point is simply that if the government of this township wants to get a true pulse for how the community feels, it should be on the ballot. And I would think that the Rumke family would want to see that also, because over the years I've been in the township for 10 years, there have been, there's been acrimony back and forth on both sides about the landfill and the Rumke family, most of it, I think, inappropriate. But I would think that the Rumke family would want a ballot issue to see whether or not the township truly endorses the expansion of the landfill. And if the populace of this township votes to endorse it, then all that acrimony goes out the window forever, because the people have spoken at the ballot box, and I think that's the way it should be handled. And I'll submit, yield the rest of my time, 27 seconds.
Is that live? Hi. My name is Dr. Sky Shelby. I'm a practicing chiropractor in Colrain Township for the past 25 years. I'm here to show my support as a business owner for settlement. In the past 25 years, I've seen firsthand what an asset Rumke is to the township, both economically and financially supporting local causes. Years ago, I developed a saying at my practice. At Shelby Chiropractic, "We've got your back." Well, Rumke has always had my back. At any given time, you see Rumke employees shopping and dining at any restaurants and local businesses in the area. You know they're at Rumke because they always have Rumke shirts on, and they're always smiling. I can, I can't tell you how many times I've been at a social or civil meeting and someone states, "Hey, somebody needs to do something." And Rumke is that somebody. It is very refreshing and comforting to know that unlike a national chain, we have a company like Rumke that supports Colrain businesses and causes.
Hi. I just wanted to say that I have lived here all my life, graduated from Colrain High School. I own a business here, and I own five other properties besides that in Colrain Township. And I'm, I really like our township, and I want to support it. And I believe we should settle. We need a lot of things here. Rumke is a good company. They take care of many issues better than other waste companies, and I think we should support them and settle. Thanks. Thanks.
Morgan Button.
Hello? Hi, y'all. My name is Morgan Button. I am a geologist, a geochemist, hydrogeologist, and I'm not a native of Corrine Township, but my wife is. Her maiden name is Egbert, born and raised, went to Corrine. And I'd just like to stand up here and tell you all that I support this effort for the compromise. I think it's a smart thing to do. It's interesting, landfills are very interesting animals as far as the chemistry's involved, and obviously, we've seen so many things happen since we've been here, when we moved back here in ninety-one. In fact, if any of you know who Ron Clai is, we used to live right across the street from the landfill in his rental house there, there at Old Corrine. So in any case, I just, both me and my wife, or I and my wife, wanted to come here and express our support. The other issue, the gentleman that mentioned the fact that when you go to places, including downtown, Rumke has a presence, obviously, providing port-alets and things, and gives you somewhat of a civic pride about the township, that we do have a business here that is not only, that we're aware of, but the Hamilton County. And I, at one time, was also an oil and gas inspector in south-central Ohio. And they have landfills, where they have a landfill down there that we've used many times for disposal of hazardous materials. And they comply with all the rules and regulations, so they, they're a good steward. They know what they're doing, they've got their act together. I think that in the long run, I think we'd be best served that we provide this compromise and move on to other things in the township. Thank you.
Bruce Carter.
I came down here and signed up at three o'clock, I thought I was going to be first on. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak before you. I have given you each a copy of what I was going to say, so I'm not going to bore you with that, I'll be brief. Two points that I would like to make. One is, where do we put the waste if we don't have Rumke? If they don't allow them, if we don't allow them to expand, where do we put it? It's got to go someplace else, and it's going to go into litigation and be another eight years before they even settle. My recommendation, as a longtime Corrine resident, thirty-seven years, is to settle. Trial is not an option, please. The expense of a trial, I don't agree with. Thank you.
Joe Eplin.
Thank you. I've been a resident of Corrine Township for fifty years, and I've lived on Crest Road for thirty-seven. I've watched Mount Rumke build. I was able to see the fire out my back windows. I've put up with smell from time to time. When my driveway started to crack after the blasting occurred every day at about three minutes after three, they provided me with a seismograph in my backyard to justify, verify whether or not that was their problem or not. I think Rumke has been a good community person. But my question is this: For thirty-seven years, I've lived on Crest Road. We're now going to expand the dump to the street behind me. What does that do for the property values of everybody on Crest Road? If you pass this ordinance, and I firmly believe that you will, because I think dollar signs are dancing in your eyes, who's coming to knock on my door from Rumke to say, "I'll buy your property at a reasonable price"? Or am I going to continue to have the property value decline because people know that in fifteen years, the dump will expand to the street right behind me? Thank you.
Joe Camp.
I just have a few questions. On a pamphlet you sent out to everybody, it had on there about improving the streets, curbs, sidewalks, sewers, nothing on there about schools, nothing on there about fire and police department. I just think some of that money needs to go to, I'd like to know where that money's going to. It's going to go to schools, it's not even going to the fire departments, to the police department, because if we're going to spend it all on sidewalks and curbs and sewers and streets, it seems like a waste for me. And I think one thing that should be in that settlement also is, if the residents of Corrine Township need to put up with the Rumke landfill, then Corrine Township residents should not have to pay for trash pickup.
Diane Perry.
Thank you. Like a lot of people who've stood here before, I have a lot of respect for the Rumke family, remember the things that they've done for Corrine Township. However, I happen to have a PhD in physical and analytical chemistry. I was the governing board chair for the Federation of Analytical Chemistry and Spectroscopy Societies, and I'm the president-elect for the Society for Applied Spectroscopy now. And I don't feel like we have done everything, or the Rumke family, and possibly because they don't have all the information they need, have done everything that they need to do in terms of keeping that site under control. And the fact that there is a fire that has been burning there for the length of time that it has been burning indicates that the site is currently out of control. And one thing I know, being a chemist, is that you don't take a chemical reaction that's out of control and make it bigger. That isn't usually the way that goes about fixing things. So I'm opposed to the settlement in its current format. I would suggest that a number of people taking a look at this believe that they know that we have an idiomatic reaction going on underneath that hill. Part of the reason you have it is because the hill is so deep. Making it deeper, making it bigger are both in the wrong direction to bringing that site under control. And I believe that there are ways to do this. So I would encourage you to go back and sit down with the reasonable Rumke family again, and see if we can work out a way bringing in some additional experts, not legal experts looking for a financial settlement, but engineers and other people who can actually look at this and figure out how we can help Rumke bring this under control, so that we have a better quality of life in Corrine Township, and people aren't worried about their property values going down. Thank you.
Bernie Fielder Day.
Hello? Is that on? Is that on? My name is Bernie Fielder Day, and I live in Corrine Township for the last twenty-eight years, and I've had a business here for forty years. And I was on the Board of Trustees for eight years, and on the board that turned down the Rumke expansion plan. And the reason we turned it down, because our comprehensive plan, which I wish the trustees would sometime read it, that a third of our township, when we had public hearings, said, "No more landfill expansion." Those were public hearings, everybody was invited, and they're the ones that really get the brunt of the landfill. And the second thing we did in 2006 is we had a new zoning code that clearly spells out what Rumke can do, and let them abide by the zoning. Mr. Barbier, you talked about court cases, I understand that. But the comprehensive plan, our zoning plan, was put together by so-called expert attorneys. So what is our problem? Like I said, a third of the township said, "No more landfill expansion." In our newsletter, we say, I'm going to only hit one part of it. Noxious odors will continue to pollute the air when Corrine Township and neighboring communities as long as the underground reaction is active, meaning a fire. That started when I was on the board. It was kind of hapagably. The sad part of it is, is two people from Corrine Township responded, one of them who was a full-time employee of Rumke, also a volunteer firefighter, a part-time firefighter, and somebody else. That's who responded. Doesn't make any sense to me. Why wasn't somebody looking out for the best interest of Corrine Township? I went through the current consent decree and the one from 2000. It is, I'll use the example, it's worse than a Bengal deal. If you guys can't do better, then maybe you guys, who are not business people, same as county commissioners were not business people when they negotiated the Bengal deal, maybe you need to get some experts that know what the hell they're talking about and playing words across the table when you're negotiating. Because every, I went through the consent decree, I'm not going to talk about it, but every item could be improved. Here recently, in The Inquirer, there was an article that says that the big stench compost thing in the city of Cincinnati, they had a hundred and nine complaints in two years. We've had nine hundred and twenty. When are, when are, when are the township trustees going to stand up and say, "Hey, enough is enough"? There's always a political will, and evidently, the city of Cincinnati says, "We don't want it with a hundred and nine complaints, we've had nine hundred and twenty." Sometime, I guess you gotta, I guess, obviously, have the courage and the principles to stand up. Yes, we may lose a lawsuit, but we have got the tools, comprehensive plan and zoning that says we should win. So have some courage and do what we elected you to do. And I've heard from this board in the past where we, they've made comments about they were elected to make decisions for us. No, you were elected to represent us. Thank you.
Phyllis Plyman.
I'm glad this podium is here, because I do need to hold on to it to feel steady. I'm glad this podium is here. Thank you. I didn't know that I was going to try to speak tonight, and I would like to know whether or not I'm permitted to ask for people to raise their hand if they are for the settlement, and for people to raise their hand if they're for the settlement. I'm really curious as to exactly what this audience prefers, and a third show of hands would be requested as to whether or not we would like this to go on to the ballot. Question for the folks up here.
Hang on, hang on one second. Hang on one second. It's okay to do the show of hands, but we can't go on the ballot. That's not something that's available to us now, okay? This is a process in the settlement. If you want to ask who's for and who's against, that's okay.
For the folks that would like to settle, would you like to raise your hands, please?
She said, "The people that would prefer to settle."
Now, who would like to proceed with the lawsuit? This is a representation, I hope, of how the people feel who are here, and hopefully you will consider. Thank you.
Scott Stoll.
I really wasn't prepared for all of this. But my point is, is the settlement sounds like a good deal for everybody. If you don't go for it, there's a lot to lose for Corrine Township. If we do go for it, Corrine's going to benefit, Rumke's going to benefit. My point is, in this community, we're all a big conglomeration of people that can all benefit from this. Where else is our garbage going to go? That's all I got to say.
Mary Combs.
Okay, here we go. I'm Mary Combs, I've been a resident of Corrine Township for twenty years, and I live on Old Corrine Road. So I know that we're a small population, that's right around the dump, Rumke's dump, compared to the whole township as a whole. But I feel that Corrine Township's property values are not increasing right now, as are the rest of the areas surrounding us. And it's been very difficult to live here and come to these meetings, and we've been watching Corrine expand and expand and expand. And I know that I personally would like to see it stopped. I don't know if that's going to happen, but what you gave us tonight were all the benefits from settling. What would it cost us? In other words, if we chose no settlement, our property taxes may go up four percent or five percent to pick up the differences, but we didn't get any of those figures. We have nothing to compare to, that if we go ahead and we argue this, and then we lose, what is it going to cost each family? Okay? If we don't lose, what's it going to cost? If we don't lose, what's it gonna cost each family? I hear we're getting a lot of money if we settle, but what if we don't settle and we win?
All right. Thank you for hosting us this evening. I'm probably gonna have to disagree with some of my fellow citizens, but that's the beauty of the democratic process, that we can do this. I think we are losing sight of the fact that the best possible outcome is not to live with a landfill for 50 to 70 more years. I hear people come up and say, "Well, this is the best we can do." The best possible outcome is to win the case and finally be free of having to take the garbage from the rest of Hamilton County, the Midwest, and even as far away as New York. Then we could foster small businesses and encourage professional, higher-paying jobs and continue the great work our Township Development Director has been doing with our Stone Creek Development and a lot of other positive things I see with businesses moving into Colrain Township. I think having the largest landfill in the state is a real detriment to us. I was actually on the Land Use Advisory Board when we made the decision to surround the landfill with light industrial. The reason we did that was to provide Rumke with a legitimate use for their land. It was not a legitimate use the way it used to be when it was surrounded by residential, because obviously residential abutting a landfill is not appropriate. I believe still that light industrial is a reasonable use of the land around the landfill. I think we could foster small businesses, maybe machine shops and other businesses that wouldn't have an issue with being near the landfill. And based on that, and also, I agree with Bernie Fiedlede, we took a lot of time putting our zoning code in place. I think it could very well stand in a court of law. And I think we should go for the best possible outcome, which is to end the taking of garbage into our township and to win the case. I also wonder why Rumke is willing to settle if they feel there's no chance for us to win. Another thing I'd like to point out is that years ago, when Rumke started, our township was rural. And this probably wasn't an appropriate enough place for a landfill. But as of right now, our township is not rural. In fact, the last article I read in an agricultural article in the newspaper said that we don't have a single farm remaining in Hamilton County. This is no longer a rural township. And so what's not in appropriate use anymore is the Rumke expansion. That's the inappropriate use for our township. I think that we need to halt it and go for the small businesses and to grow our township the way we have been doing. I'm also concerned about the quality of the operation. I agree with our chemist friend, who said that the fire is a case in point, that the landfill is not under control. If we have to go for a settlement, let's go for a settlement that brings in those experts that are gonna get that under control. But I'd rather we not do that, go for the settlement. I don't believe that the money adequately compensates us for taking away our future. We have the ability to be a fantastic place. We are on the cutting edge. If we sacrifice 300 more acres to a landfill in some of the prime, I think the north area of our township where we all live is a pretty prime area, I think we're taking away a huge economic engine. I also agree that this forum, while it's appreciated, is probably not a way to get a real feeling for what Colrain Township feels. I think a vote would be a better way. And at the very least, in this settlement, there should be no further of expansion of Rumke allowed. It shouldn't be no further of expansion except for the trustees' agreement, because we all know that sometimes politics has a way of getting in the way of what's best. I think that it should be written, if it has to have an agreement, that there's no further expansion of Rumke beyond this point at all. So thank you very much.
Like to, whoa, that's loud. Like to thank you for the opportunity to come in and speak in front of you, right after my mom too, which is kinda weird, but hello. My name is Adam Mohler. I am a lifelong Colrain Township resident, and I live off of Dry Ridge Road. I'm here because I worry particularly about the precedent that the settlement, if reached, will set for the future of Colrain Township. We've already talked about property devaluation and limitation of future growth, so I won't dwell on that. Now, we're asked to only focus on the immediate tonight, but I think that's dangerous logic for a body that should plan for the future. So I ask you what this settlement and the precedent it sets will mean for Rumke when they want to expand yet again. And no one here should delude themselves into thinking that Rumke won't push for further expansion, after all their successful business. They can simply buy up more devalued land until they possess a fresh swath of land, just like they do now, ready to expand into. They will ask the township for permission again, and we may deny them again, but if settlement and bargaining works in 2014, what's to stop it from working 20 or 30 years down the road? If we don't fight for a legal solution now, the cycle will continue. And I want everyone here to keep in mind that all the benefits, all benefits, come with risks. And if Rumke is so in favor of our community's growth, why don't they have the respect to invest in other cleaner, smarter waste removal tactics that don't involve building mountains and ruining communities? And it seems that by upping their proposed payment 25 cents a ton, they can practically buy the township off. But not if we say no now. If we don't, what's to stop Rumke the next time they want to push for an expansion? And news flash, there are other places in the world which Rumke already owns, particularly in Indiana, that Rumke could expand into without ruining nearly as many homes or businesses. Rumke may and does provide many jobs in the short term, but I ask you what other jobs, industry and housing, the dump will kill in the surrounding area if they continue to expand north and east? From someone who would like to live in Colrain Township in the future, I would like to know that my home is not constantly threatened by an expanding trash heap. If we don't settle, we may indeed lose the case in the Hamilton County Court. But the Ohio Supreme Court has been reasonable in the past, and I know it's not certain that they accept us. And I do have confidence that if they do accept our case, they will settle in favor of the citizens of Colrain. Should we choose to fight the lawsuit? And if we win, we won't have to have any more meetings about Rumke's expansion. We should not just delay the inevitable, continued expansion by appeasing Rumke. We should fight it now while we still have a good chance of winning. So to the immediate issue, by settling, we establish a dangerous precedent for future Colrain Township residents and for Rumke's expansion. This isn't about kicking Rumke out, they'll be here for 15 more years. It's about ending their expansion permanently and moving them to a more rural area that lessens no property value except for their surrounding rural area. And it may sound, and it may sound good to make money now, 15 years before Rumke expands, but I think it would be wiser to fight the lawsuit now and focus instead on other types of development beyond the dump, like bringing in more retail and business to the northwest region of the township. I think it is your duty as elected representatives to care about the future and the needs of your township.
Hi there. I'm Linda Stryker. I've been a resident of Colrain Township for 27 years. I live approximately one mile from the landfill. It was here when I moved in, and I knew it was here, and I made the decision that it was all right. And it's been my experience that the Rumkes have been good corporate citizens since I've been here. My concern, and I agree, everybody has to put their trash somewhere, and they've been the business that has allowed people in the area to do so. My concern with this agreement is that my issues are more environmental issues. I see the monetary impact that will be positive to the township, but I'm concerned about the fact that I heard nothing about what the environmental impact will be. The landfill is sitting right on the aquifer. What types of controls, what types of remediation, what types of investigation has been done by the company and the township government? Because I do, unlike our esteemed Chamber of Commerce President, believe that government does have a responsibility to make sure that businesses are doing what they're supposed to do too. So I don't know what the options are for going back to the table on this agreement, but I certainly would like to see some type of reassurance that the environmental impact, the expansion is not gonna be untoward.
Thank you. My name is Jim Brown. I've been a resident of Colrain Township for 30 years, and I've been a small business owner for 10 years. And as a small business owner, as a resident, I wholeheartedly support this settlement. I think there's great risk. If we don't accept something now, I really think it's great that you dig it together, the two parties, and negotiate something that seems to be a pretty good settlement. I've heard a lot of people talk about small business, we could do something else. It's almost impossible to talk about how tough it is to be a small business in Colrain Township and watch what's gone up and down Colrain Avenue, especially south of Galbraith Road. Yes, Stone Creek Development's beautiful, that it's going across the street, and that's all lovely, but you get south of Ronald Reagan Highway, it's tough. Rumke has been a great business partner for, I think, all the small businesses in this community. I think they've been a great community partner in what they've done for our schools. Anytime there's been any kind of accident, teenagers get killed in a car wreck, their safety director goes and speaks to the schools, help give money to the football programs, all the sport programs, the whole thing. I think Rumke's a great corporate sponsor. I've been to their facility, I've seen their engineers and their chemists. They're doing everything right, they're regulated by the EPA. I trust our government to, I trust you guys to keep an eye on them. I think they're all doing everything they can to minimize what's being put into the landfill. Their recycling facilities they've built are fabulous, I've been through tours of them as well. So I think Rumke's doing everything right. I think as a community, we're lucky to have them. Yes, I'm sure if I lived up close to there, where I would smell the odors or maybe the dust from the trucks going in and out, that might, I might not feel so great. But as a corporate citizen, I think they do a wonderful job for us. I support it wholeheartedly.
I'm sorry. Bob Rumke. R. Madill, M-A-D-I-L-L. Okay.
Thank you. First of all, thank you. I wanna recognize, I wanna recognize Rumke as well. I know they've done a great job, they've been a great business partner. I've lived in Colrain Township my entire life. I also am the president and CEO of one of the largest consulting engineering firms in the Midwest. And I'm involved in mediations all the time as well, probably one a year. The problem I have with it, I believe it's a horrible consent decree, and this is why. It's overwhelmingly slanted towards Rumke. The first thing it goes into is, under the settlement agreement, it states that Rumke will utilize best management practices, best available technology, and best engineering techniques, unless alternative practices or technology are shown to be equally effective. I have no idea who's enforcing that. Who's the one determining what alternative methods are? Is it Rumke? Is it Township? Who's the one saying best practical methods or best alternative methods? Typically, there's standards behind that that say, "We're gonna follow these standards." I know the EPA is there to watch over that, but there's not a lot there saying who's gonna do that if there's an alternative process. The other thing it states is the Township's liaison will be advised and communicated with. I didn't see a whole lot of power. I know they're opening the books, I know they're showing them everything else, but I don't really see, beyond just seeing the books, I can invite somebody in my business, but do they have any power to act? Or they're just a liaison, they're just an informant? If we give into this and we assume that, Rumke can do basically whatever they want as long as they're within the EPA guidelines. And I don't believe the liaison really is a powerful position. They could probably just send an email that says, "Hey, look, we're doing this, we're doing that, let's just avoid the cost of a liaison altogether." The other thing, this crazy provision about the payment, as a business owner, I don't think I would go for that, unless I knew that I wasn't gonna have the tonnage that I'm stating. I don't think you can count on $1.5 million. I look at my own street, I look at the recycling containers out there, that recycling's all going somewhere else. You might as well assume it's gonna be under a million pounds or a million tons anyway. If it wasn't, they wouldn't put it in there. I know that the legal counsel said, "Hey, look, it's a great consent, we're gonna promote them reducing their tonnage." But I look at that as saying, it's really, they wouldn't put it in there if they weren't gonna be under that anyway. The world's going towards recycling. I wish Rumke would actually incentivize recycling versus making us pay for it, but that's just my two cents on that as well. The last thing is, I've heard a lot of stuff on property values tonight. And I was really surprised to see this in a consent decree, but Rumke's actually acknowledging that the property values go down. It's an item 23 under the attachment A. I won't read the whole thing, but the last part of the sentence says, "And experts in compensating the township for reductions in real property tax revenues due to the reduction in real property valuations resulting from the location and operation of a large solid waste disposal facility within the township, Rumke shall pay to the Colrain Township as follows." It's basically a payoff. They're giving, they're not giving the tax, the people with their property taxes anything, but they're gonna give you guys, because they're recognizing a tax loss, they're gonna pay ya. So our property values go down, the taxes go up for you guys, that's great news. And I love the township. I've lived here my whole life, I plan here to live the rest of my life, as long as things go the way they should. But man, that's a tough nut to swallow. You guys get taken care of and the property owners don't. So it states right there in the consent decree, it's unbelievable. In closing... In closing, I look at this and I'll come back to the legal counsel again. Being in business, we're in suits a lot. This is the way that we're in a legal society. But I know the young man said back there, he mentioned the Supreme Court. Once it got to the Supreme Court, I want to make sure everybody knows it was a nine to nothing unanimous vote that Rumkey was not a utility. So, obviously, there is partial people out there that recognize hard work, what the rights are of the people. And I say that I think there's just as much risk inside this consent decree than there is in going to court. So, hopefully you guys do the right thing. I have faith and confidence in you to do the right thing to make this township a great place to live forever. Thank you.
Tom Reiniger.
Thank you for the careful explanation of the risks and rewards of the proposed settlement. My name is Tom Reiniger. I've lived in this township for the last 65 years. My comments tonight are really from a layperson's perspective. The decision that you have to make as trustees is really based on a lot more deliberation than I've given this process, and I don't envy you of that position. However, I would like to express two areas of concern. The first area would be concerning the impact of additional landfill space on simply being a resident of Corrine Township. And the second concern would be about the settlement agreement itself. A fact that cannot be overlooked in this discussion is the business of business is to stay in business. And a responsible business will do whatever it takes to make that possible. The cost of doing business is most often measured in dollars. However, in this situation, perhaps the overarching cost is the quality of life for some 54,000 residents of Corrine Township. The residents and quality of life of our township are not expendable commodities. We have in Corrine Township the largest landfill in Ohio and the sixth largest landfill in the entire United States. The current landfill here imports about 10,000 tons of garbage a day. The largest landfill in the United States brings in 12,000 tons a day. And by the way, that landfill serves the metropolitan region of Los Angeles. Hamilton County in Corrine Township is not in that ballpark. It's time to share the responsibility of land stewardship and landfills with other areas served by the Rumkey Corporation. It's been said before this evening, "Not in my backyard." I would add, "Not in my backyard anymore." Concerns about the settlement. The construction of an upscale corporate headquarters does not bode well for the cessation of the expansion now, or more importantly, in the future of the landfill. Second concern is the future expansion is in the hands of just three trustees. There's a statement in the settlement that says if there is a decrease in the income from property values, that income will be offset by higher fees and taxes. There is a realization that this business will have a negative impact on us as residences. In closing, the impact of creating more expansive landfill will mark the township not as a place to raise a family, but rather as a place that changes the face of the earth by creating mountains of refuse. The next expansion will be easier, as will the expansion following that. A significant part of this township will become a literal wasteland with the highest and best use of the land our township will be as a landfill. Thank you for your attention.
Jim Acton.
I'll hold it, thank you Frank. My name is Jim Acton. I've been a resident of Corrine Township probably about 35 years now. 24 of it, right down the road here. The Rumkey Corporation, I've got to agree with everybody that's said things tonight. They've been very good to the township financially and holding some of our fireworks a couple of years ago, they sponsored that when we couldn't have any money. One of the comments I'd like to make, and gentlemen, don't take this personal, but Mr. Barbier and Mr. Rowan, neither one live in a township. So, they don't know what we're facing. One lives out in the west, or northwest, northeast side of town. The other one lives in Oxford. So, I'm not holding that against you, either one of yous. But Rumkey as a corporation, I don't know how many of yous looked on their website, but they own so many landfills and so many transfer centers throughout Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana. Why do we have to be stuck with everybody's garbage? I don't know what a transfer center is, if it's what I think it is. They transfer from Chellicook, Ohio to bring it into Corrine Township. They transfer from Louisville, Kentucky to bring it here. From Owensboro, Kentucky to bring it here. From Batesville, Indiana to bring it here. So, that's one complaint I have about them. Why can't they do it? Take some of ours someplace else. We had a mercury situation last year. I've been told that that's been corrected, but mercury lasts a lot longer than what you think. One gentleman and a couple of ladies here were scientists. And there was some mention of having somebody test Rumkey and advise them. It was my understanding Corrine Township is going to hire somebody to sit on a board that we can call and say, "Hey, we don't like the smoke here, we don't like the trash here, we don't like the smell here." That's another position, I guess, that we as a taxpayer are going to pay for. The other situation being is Rumkey has said that for two years, we will be paying less for our garbage. What happens after that two years? I happened to be in sales for about 50 years. One of my biggest customers was Krogers. If I went in there and did not have a forward program saying how this product is going to sell five, 10, 15 years down the road, they'd look at me and say, "Jim, go home and figure it out and then come back and see us." So, where are we going to be at? There's a lot of people said, you know, after 15 years down the road. The other thing that came in when I read this decree is it's money, 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 money. That is the biggest issue behind this whole thing, is money, money, money. Not what it's going to be like for my grandchildren, 29 years down the road, 15 years down the road. And most of us here, we're all retired people, senior citizens people. And my biggest complaint with the trustees that we have now and with the board that's sitting in front of you, if we had this meeting at seven o'clock, there'd probably been about 50,000 young people show up out here instead of us old goats complaining about what we've had to do with in the past. So, I suggest, you know, I'm not against the Rumkey family at all. I think they're great people. I knew one of the Rumkeys for many years, we used to run around together. I happen to be Tom for a few white people that live here. I think the gentleman that said before us, "Let's take this back and think some more about it and get some experts to give us answers on what's going on at Rumkey before we decide to do anything." Thank you.
Bill Berwinkle.
Hello, my name is Bill Berwinkle. And I'm a resident of Corrine Township. I've been a resident my whole life. And I feel it is in the best interest of both parties to make this agreement. My family has lived here since the 1800s, and I speak for my whole family on this matter. Rumkey's a great company, they've been a great asset to the Corrine Township. And I just feel that this agreement would be best for both parties. Thank you.
Don Hewer.
I'm a Corrine resident for 40 years. We live out on Old Corrine. We're concerned about the dump, et cetera, so we toured the dump, or the landfill, went down and seen the recycling facility, impressed with that. Myself and my wife were in favor of the settlement. I think the idea, the vote, interesting, but I think the people that are here are the neighbors of Rumkey. And I think you get a better true feeling of how everybody is versus a vote of possibly, or even opinion of somebody down on East Miami River Road or something like that. This is your true indication of what's going on. I'm impressed, like I said, we're in favor of it and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Bruce Slattery.
Thank you, my name's Bruce Slattery. I live on Dunlap Road. I'm a second generation on the property on Dunlap Road and was hoping that the third generation would live there. I'm not so sure that's going to happen now. Some of what I wanted to talk about here, I have my notes, has already been covered. So, it's going to be briefer than what I thought. But one of the comments that was made is that you all have dollar signs in your eyes and are lured by some money coming right away. But we're in for the long haul, most of us. So, I think we need to think beyond those few dollars there. The other comments were, if we don't put the trash here in this dump, where's it going to go? We heard other comments here, other people's trash has been coming here for a long time. We wouldn't be here tonight, we wouldn't have this discussion if it weren't for the greed of the Rumkey family. And I'm not talking the family down, I'm just saying the greed is what brought this dump to the size it is now. When we moved into the neighborhood, it was a small operation there. It's grown and grown and grown and grown. And it hasn't grown from our trash, it's grown from other people's trash. We wouldn't be here tonight looking at the expansion if the dump hadn't grown to a huge edifice there. So, what I'm here to speak for, and others have spoken better than I have or I can, is the fact that I oppose the expansion of the dump. And I think you all need to do the right thing and make sure that we don't have to live with this for that next 100 years or whatever it's going to take. Thank you.
Susan Bross. Susan Bross, B-R-O-S-S. Randy Hasty.
My name's Randy Hasty. I'm a youngster here, I've only lived here 28 years. One thing that has not been brought up is what happens to the loss of tax revenue from the loss of jobs when the landfill closes in 15 years. Yes, those employees may be moved to other locations, but they will no longer be in Corrine Township. So, you have to look at that. Also, Rumkey is a partner with Northwest Schools in their education program. And also, things have been talked about, property tax and increase in property value or what have you. How much is the tax going to have to go up to make up for what we lose again by losing Rumkey in 15 years? So, I think you can tell by my comments I am in favor of the settlement. I think that's the best thing to do for the township, and I thank you for your time.
Greg Williams. Greg Williams. Glenn King. Bradley Dunn.
Thank you for bringing us out in this forum like this, we could all get a chance to speak a little bit. I've been a resident of Corrine Township for 10 years. My fourth child will be graduating Northwest High School next year. So, we've been in the community, you know, for quite a while now. We like Corrine Township. Where else could you be at your house, out in a rural setting and watch red foxes run around? And then five minutes later be at a mall shopping? It's a great community for us. Rumkey's part of that community. Rumkey has stepped up, been good neighbors, done a lot of good things. I am in favor of this settlement. I think it's good for Corrine Township. I think it's good for a very strong family-owned business that's here in our community. We need to support them because they support us as well. And, you know, it does take courage to do things. But sometimes there's a fine line between what is courageous and what is foolish. And I think we need to keep that in mind to go ahead and move forward with this settlement. Thank you.
John Revly.
Hello, I'm John Revly. I've been a member of Corrine Township for 25 years. 15 years I've lived next to the landfill, less than a mile away. Great neighbors. I live behind North Gate Mall. More traffic, more noise than Rumkey ever was. I think we should do the settlement. I think the revenue is great for us. I don't think in this time of the economy, I don't think we should turn down anything. I think we need to help Corrine Township. I think we need to do more for it. So, thank you.
Ken Stedham.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm a resident of Corrine Township, I've been a resident for about 12 years. I probably live within two miles of the landfill. And what I see this settlement as, is an opportunity. I think it's an opportunity to bring much-needed revenue into the township. It's an opportunity to save the expenses of the litigation. But I also think it's an opportunity to keep a very large, stable business in Corrine Township. And I think that's very, very important too. So, I guess I'm here in short to say that, you know, I want you guys to consider moving forward with the settlement as it is. Thank you.
Steve Schaefer.
Hello, my name's Steve Schaefer.
Hello, my name's Steve Schaefer. Been a resident of Colrain Township for about thirty years and I like the idea of the settlement. It's a way to resolve things rather than duking it out in court, but I do think there are some adjustments that need to be considered. We keep, a lot of people brought up that, I guess the trustees, the dollar signs, that's probably true to a certain extent, but it's not, I live the south part of the township, so I don't get any of the smell, it's not hurting my property values, but I'd be saving tax money by, you know, spending this two and a half million dollars in the township. I think something needs to be considered for the immediate residents of the landfill or the, you know, people right around there. You know, we need some type of a buffer zone and should be, not just land, but something landscaped really nice for the adjacent property owners. You know, I don't want to see this big mountain next to me, so there's gotta be some way to make it palatable for the adjacent owners. And we could even consider taking part of that two and a half million dollars and finding a legal way to subsidize the property taxes for the adjacent owners. You know, they shouldn't have their property values go down because of this. Also, I think there should be provisions to actually get that reaction under control. I mean, you know, maybe this is, the agreement's postponed until that's actually, the issue with that reaction is completely resolved. And I've got another concern, is I think the agreement needs to address what happens if the Rumkey family sells? Rumkey's been great for the township and it's a great family, they do a lot of good. You know, hopefully the family doesn't have an argument and end up selling it to, you know, some out-of-state corporation. You know, if that happened, what's that gonna do to our agreement or what control do we have? We trust the Rumkeys to try to do the right thing. I don't know that we trust somebody else who might buy it to do the same. So anyway, I think working out an agreement is a great idea, I just think there's some, what I'll still call minor adjustments that need to be made. Thank you.
Brenda Davidson.
Hi, my name is Brenda Davidson and I am a Colrain Township resident and I have been for seventeen years. Colrain Township trustees and residents, I am without any reservation for the settlement agreement with Rumkey. The benefits of this settlement agreement far outweighs the detriments. Here are some of the facts of the agreement, which are provided by Colrain Township's website and Rumkey's website. The proposed expansion of the Rumkey landfill is over two hundred acres, which belongs to Rumkey. Not only will Colrain Township be receiving 1.5 million a year base payment, but they will also get twenty-five cents per ton in addition to the forty-five cents per ton already in place. In addition to those fees, Rumkey will also pay fifty thousand a year to the Chamber of Commerce for ten years and buffering in the landfill will be put into place. So what exactly are the benefits to this agreement? Rumkey is expanding on their land only. Colrain Township will be receiving a substantial amount of money for this agreement and I don't know about you, but I would like to spruce up our neighborhood, improve our parks and even use this money to improve our educational system in the township. According to the information provided by the Duke Energy Center, the Duke Energy Center approximately buys 1.5 million tons of methane gas from Rumkey. This in turn is two percent of the total gas that is delivered to their customers each year. And what is the negative impact of Colrain Township winning this litigation? First, according to the research performed by Hamilton County, if Rumkey closes, residents and businesses may pay an additional thirty-four million dollars a year. Second, annual revenue decreases from six hundred and thirty-eight thousand to zero dollars after the current landfill is completed, which is an estimated fifteen years. Finally, there will be a loss of jobs if the landfill were to close. As a community member, I firmly believe that Rumkey is willing to settle because they care about Colrain Township's future. Those are the facts. Now we have two options. We can either accept the general settlement agreement that both sides contributed to or we can choose a path that negatively affects Colrain Township's future. I am the future of Colrain Township and I am for this settlement. Thank you.
Lisa Smits. Lisa Smits. Darlene Douglas.
Hi, my name is Darlene Douglas. I live in Colrain Township and I have my whole life. I raised my family here. My two children both bought houses here and live in Colrain Township. They got some of the benefits from the Rumkey family with the support of their system, with the school systems. They're a great neighbor to everyone here, including the churches, that they help with festivals. They're wonderful neighbors to us and I am for the expansion, for the settlement offer. It's a great place to live. If anything does happen with the closing of Rumkey, like a number of people said, there's gonna be a loss of jobs, revenues, the businesses, these places will close. It's not gonna expand the businesses, the small businesses, they will close. So I am, my family are also, in favor of the settlement agreement. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Jill Ringering. I apologize if I butchered that.
First of all, I'd like to address all of you and say thank you so much for coming tonight to support the Rumkey family. I've been to many meetings and sometimes I'm the only one up here and the rest are all no-nos, so I appreciate all the business, all the homeowners for being here. Now, I'd like for the three of you to maybe even go through some old meetings and see how often people come to support Rumkey. They are here by the dozens tonight, that says something. That says that this settlement must be good for Colrain, these people would not be out if it wasn't. I don't care if you had this meeting at six o'clock, seven or eight o'clock, when we're for something, we're here. My family moved to Rumkey in nineteen fifty-five. It wasn't very big then, we lived directly across the road on Hughes Road. Rumkey has been doing what he's been doing all the years, picking up garbage. Families nowadays, they go out and eat lunch, breakfast, supper, that's a lot of trash when you eat out every night. Mothers no longer use diapers, they choose to use Pampers. How many people in this room would have a mountain of diapers? So the mountains of garbage are not something the Rumkey family created, everyone in this room did. And I've said it a million times, Rumkey is a good neighbor, I am very, very proud to have them for a neighbor. Now, someone said we should get free garbage collection in Colrain Township. I disagree. Rumkey is not in business to give something away. Rumkey is doing nothing wrong, he should not give free garbage to Colrain. We should all pay our fair share. Anyone that disagrees, it's easy, cancel your service with Rumkey and I don't know what you're gonna do with your garbage, but start your own dump in your backyard, I don't know. Otherwise, pay Colrain Township and pay Rumkey their money. And we hear that there's been nine hundred and twenty complaints about Rumkey. Now, you all up there are smarter than me, but I believe we have over fifty-five thousand residents. Nine hundred calls out of fifty-five thousand people doesn't sound like much to me. I mean, my money would still have to go with, you know, there's a few that's gonna complain about anything. And what else? Well, I guess everyone else has just about said everything we have to say, so I would like to personally thank the Rumkey employees, the Rumkey family for what they do. There is one thing, I had three brothers that, when they were younger, worked for Rumkey and none of us here can appreciate what the drivers go through. When they stop to pick up your garbage, your garbage, your garbage, they don't know if at three in the morning or whatever time they get there, when they open that can up, are they gonna have a handful of glass? I had a younger brother that said, he never knew if he was gonna get cut with glass, bit by a rat, what was gonna happen. And not one driver knows and yet they risk that every single day so that we can have our yards smell good without garbage in it. So I deeply appreciate the Rumkey family and every one of you workers, God bless y'all. Thank you.
Gary Schwartz.
Thank you. I guess I have a different look at this, it's not so emotional. I do come back, I have an engineering background as some of the other people have and they make valid points. We have a leachate problem, which is what you're calling the underground fire and the only reason why it's not burning is because it's anaerobic. With the absence of air, it can't burn. And when you extract that, the byproducts are hydrogen sulfide and when you burn that, you emit more SO2s to the atmosphere, which I don't know how that's being regulated, but that is a big problem. You say that it's on the north end of the plant. This is a byproduct of decaying matter in a liquid state. It's not only the north end of the plant, it may be at the north end of the plant where they know it. It's, I find it negligent that they say that this is just gonna go on because there are, and I'm not an expert on these matters, but there are ways of controlling that and diffusing the leachate. The other thing is your VOCs. If you go to the EPA's website and you put in Rumkey, it's astounding to see how many violations have been going on since, oh, the early two thousands, at least as far as it goes back. They haven't been addressed, there were supposed to be wet scrubber systems put in place, supposedly there was. If the picture was any indication, it's not a very good system. When it was found not to be working, they couldn't even tell us when it stopped working, when the flues, the flames went out or anything like that. I think what we're dealing with here is basically a health concern and not so much monetary. It doesn't seem like these problems are being addressed, they just keep getting the same violations. If you go back through, there's violations every year. It was up to probably about 2012 this afternoon, but I'm sure there's some in 2013 and there'll be more in 2014. The question isn't whether to expand the dump, which would be monetarily beneficial to the area, but I think the real question is, how can we expand a dump that has this many problems and they're not being addressed? And if they are being addressed, they aren't being, they're not actually being cured. So my only problem with the expansion of the dump is, we have a bunch of problems existing right now and until we get those under control, how can we even comprehend expanding the dump? Thank you.
Carl Hafer.
I'm against the settlement. I want us to go to trial because I think we got a damn good chance. Now why am I against a settlement? You've heard it here tonight, you've heard Bernie Federley, you've heard the young tall fellow in a blue shirt. You heard the guy in the brown suit. Three people that I can point out that did a tremendous job at displaying what their thoughts are. Go back, review that and it'll mean a whole lot. I'm against a settlement. Let's go to trial. Thank you.
Peg Steinman.
Can you hear me? I'm a Colrain Township resident, except for the speaker in front of me, I'd like to kind of interrupt the Rumkey love fest here. I'm against the settlement. In reading it through, it seems to me that it is heavily weighted in favor of Rumkey. The only thing that it's costing them is some money and frankly, they are a huge operation and the money that it is costing them, I believe is negligible. It does nothing to ameliorate our falling property values or my smelling this interminable fire underground when I sit on my deck at night. I guess that's it. I do agree with the chemist who spoke, who said that there should be ways that we can address this fire and why are we giving into a settlement allowing a company that cannot control the fire underground to expand? It's their job to control that fire and if they cannot, why should they grow? No matter what a great corporate citizen they are or how many familial ties Rumkey has to Colrain Township, I believe that by voting for the settlement, Colrain Township would be giving up its strongest power that is zoning for our health and safety. Thanks.
Ann Powers.
Hi, my name is Ann Powers and I've been a resident of Colrain Township for thirteen years. I am in favor of the proposed settlement between Rumkey and Colrain Township. Not only will it be financially beneficial to us, but it also gives us some say in Rumkey's operations. Now, everybody's talking about garbage and landfill expansion, I'm a big recycler and I've been for years and when I look around to my Colrain Township neighbors, not many people do recycle. So one of the reasons Rumkey needs more landfill space is because people don't recycle. Rumkey's made it very easy and affordable to recycle, so I encourage you not only to vote in favor of the settlement, but I encourage everyone to start recycling and encourage your neighbors to do so as well. Thank you.
Carl Walter.
Hi, my name is Carl Walter. I've been a Colrain resident for forty-five years and I do want to applaud both sides for going in on a good faith effort and trying to negotiate this as opposed to going to a... and trying to negotiate this as opposed to going to a, the suit. So, I, I am in favor of the settlement. I basically, I get benefits from Rumkey on a daily basis, both myself and my family. And I, I agree that the settlement, it makes economic sense for the township as a whole. So, there again, I support the settlement. Thank you.
Randy Ellert. Randy Ellert.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Randy Ellert. I'm a 23-year resident of Colrain Township, a 25-year retired battalion chief of the Colrain Township Fire Department, and an 18-year employee of Rumkey. And I am in favor of the settlement. I chose to speak this evening to share my experiences with the Rumkey organization. I had the opportunity to work with Rumkey as a township fire official and as a Rumkey employee. I have seen firsthand their commitment to their employees, their customers, and the communities they serve. Most of my work experience with Rumkey has been in the safety department. I have seen firsthand, both on emergency incidents and everyday business, that they are committed to safety, the environment, and compliance at all levels. I personally value all of our township services, especially our parks and our community center. And I believe these services are essential to the community. In addition, I believe the financial support from Rumkey will allow infrastructure improvements and other capital investments not otherwise obtainable with the current funding streams. Most importantly, as a resident, I would like to express my sincere support and favor of the proposed settlement because of the new and future opportunities the township can address that will increase the quality of life for my family and the future generations of Colrain residents. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, our next speaker, Bob Vioxx.
My name is Bob Vioxx, and I have been a resident of Colrain Township since 1978. I've worked in Colrain Township for more than 25 years as well, and I am for this settlement. I don't know in this day and age why anybody would want to throw out or have somebody want to leave their community that employs as many people as Rumkey does. The benefits of people going into businesses up and down Colrain Avenue would go away with those people leaving this area. Rumkey has been committed to the development and improvement of the properties around here in this settlement, adding light industry on Struble Road, building a new corporate office. And that may not mean anything to anybody, but that vacant property that sat there, nothing on it for all these years. This settlement would also improve the roads, schools, parks, probably help the police and fire departments as well. And I just think it would be a benefit to Colrain Township if you approve this settlement. Thank you.
Jesse Hack.
Hi, I have lived in Colrain Township all my life. I've lived in my present home 40 years. If you look at the map here, the circle, I'm pretty sure that all the people in favor of this settlement don't live within that circle like I do. The green part there, Triple Creek Park, that's where I live. When I look out my front window, I see Rumkey Mountain. Forty years ago, I didn't see that. I can't go out in my yard many nights because it smells so bad. A good example is last Wednesday, Thursday, the 16th, 17th, you turned your air conditioners off, threw your windows open. I couldn't do that. It was so bad, I had to leave my home Wednesday night for several hours. I'm pretty sure you're going to okay this. That's what the business community wants. Without a vote, that's what they'll get. What I'd like to see is that within that circle, or even less, say within half a mile of Rumkey, if you're a resident and would like to leave, that there couldn't be some kind of additional compensation from Rumkey, that we can get market value for our homes. I'd like to move and live in your neighborhood, and I wouldn't have to put up with the blasting. The last time there was blasting, I ended up with cracks in my foundation. The house rocked every day, and now you're going to move it closer? Like I said, the stink is so bad some nights, I can't use my yard. And now you're going to move that closer? It's good for Colrain Township. I understand the financial part of it. And like I said, everybody seems to want it approved. But I'd like to see something for those of us who are going to lose and have been losing and have lost property value and would like to leave, there'd be some kind of, within a certain distance, say half a mile, that I'm not, I don't want them to buy my home, but if I decide to sell, that I just receive market value. That's all. Thank you.
Bill Brickler.
Been a resident of Colrain Township for 42 years now. Listening to quite a bit of factual information here tonight, quite a bit of bull feathers. But in summation, I'd like to see two things. I feel it's you people's obligation to put this thing on the ballot and get the input from everybody in Colrain Township. If you get a thumbs up on that then, get this safety issues taken care of, these fires and so forth, by some outsider that comes in here that knows what they're doing before you approve it then. That's about all I've got. Thank you.
Andy Bedron.
Thank you. I'm Andy Bedron, Colrain resident. And I came here tonight expecting to tell you, the board, to thank you first for sending out as much information as you did to the residents, laying out the case in what seemed to be a nonpartisan way. And looking at that, it seemed to be economically quite an easy decision. And I support the settlement because the other outcomes and the risk reward do seem to be pretty obvious in favor of a settlement. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you.
Rich McVeigh.
Thank you, Rich McVeigh. I've only been here 25 years, but I do represent power. Property owners want equal rights, and many of those people have been here for a lot longer than that. We are here to share with you our deep-felt concerns and remind you of your responsibility to represent the future generations of our township. When this landfill closes in 15 or 20 years, it will have been operating over 90 years. It's time to close that chapter of our township history and lay the groundwork for a healthy environment for future generations. This expansion violates our land use plan and our zoning regulations. The fire goes on unabated. How it started or how to put it out is unreconciled. Odors are a violation of Ohio law. The landfill sucks the quality of life from our community, reduces our property values, and lowers our tax base. The Ohio Supreme Court has ruled 9 to 0. Landfills are public utili- are not public utilities and are required to adhere to zoning laws just like everyone else. Devis Elementary School was shut down in part due to landfill proximity. Our township is investing millions of dollars in improvement projects, all on the assumption that a rising tide lifts all boats. This landfill does the opposite. Like the landfill, this proposed settlement stinks. To some, this document reveals much about character and weakness. It is very disturbing and very disconcerting. Trustees Dieter, Reinhardt, and Ritter, you will determine our future and yours. You have a law on your side. You have morality on your side. You have a clear majority of residents on your side. You know the negative impact this landfill has had on our township can't be denied. You know this. You know this settlement flies in the face of all that we are doing to turn this township around. Every clear-thinking person understands the long-term drain this represents on the township and Hamilton County. You know residents will have suffered many negative impacts of this landfill for 90 years before it closes. Stop and rush and define the dimension, the long-term impacts on future generations in our township and your township. And furthermore, hear a clear message. Stand up and fight. Fight. Fight for your families. Fight for the people in this township. Do not capitulate. Do not look weak. When we go to court, we expect you to win and to employ the best resources to secure that end. Now, something I've learned in my 70 years, there are things in life that are worth fighting for. Decisions made on solid principles are not complex. They just take courage. Principle-based decisions reveal your character and your integrity. Quoting Teddy Roosevelt, "Character in the long run is the decisive factor in the life of an individual and nations alike." Quoting from The Good Book, Psalm 24, "The earth is the Lord's and everything in it, the world and all who live in it. For he founded it on the seas and he established it on the waters. Who then may ascend the mountain of the Lord? Who may stand in his holy place? The one who has clean hands and a pure heart, who does not trust in an idol or swear by a false god." Trustees, don't sell Colrain Township's future and the future of your children for a few pieces of silver.
William Nordman.
I'm a resident of Colrain Township. I've lived here for 38 years. Rumkey was a pit when I moved here. Now, it's a mountain. They are using the same techniques to handle garbage that they did when they first moved here in 1945. They should be at the forefront of new 21st century techniques for handling garbage and recycling. We hear about best engineering practices. Those are practices that have developed over the last 50 years. They should be using the practices that they are going to develop in the next 50 years. And to do that, it's going to reduce landfill sizes. They do not need 300 acres to employ 21st century landfill techniques. To accept this decree, you talk about risk. The risk of losing the lawsuit. If you accept this decree, there is no more risk because you've already lost.
Tom Hart. Karen Whitcomb.
According to the July 16th edition of the Cincinnati Business Courier, the Rumkey Family Company collects over $500 million a year in revenue. The Rumkey Family Company has money, power, and influence. They are the 1%. The Rumkey Family Company money comes in part from the almost 300-acre landfill that's located within our residential community. Their mismanagement of that landfill caused an unprecedented landslide in 1996, numerous air and water permit violations, and the current 57-acre underground fire that's been burning for five years with no end in sight. And just recently, we experienced the dumping of mercury into the area. The multimillion-dollar Rumkey Family Company is using their millions to buy even more acreage to make even more profit by increasing the landfill located in a suburban residential community by 300 more acres. The multimillion-dollar Rumkey Family Company is using their power to try to persuade the trustees to allow them to place more garbage in a residentially-zoned setting, to the extent that the Garbage Mountain will be located 2,000 feet from the Northwest High School property line. That power is evident in that the citizens of our community were not even notified that a mediator had been called in regarding the expansion lawsuit. No one knew there were settlement negotiations going on, and no citizens were invited to the table at that time to give their input. It was announced without warning over the July 4th weekend that a proposed settlement had been drafted. Citizens were given just 16 days to respond and attend this public hearing. Many people are on vacation or unavailable to on such short notice. The people have deliberately been intentionally kept out of the process. It's interesting that the same Cincinnati Business Courier article I talked about quotes Bill Rumkey Jr. and it says, he's talking about the biggest area that he's evolved in now that he's taken over the company. And he said, quote, "I've taken, it's the political side. I've always dealt with zoning, but I've gotten a lot more involved with our national lobbying group," unquote. The Rumkey Company is a privately-held multimillion-dollar entity. They are well-represented, but what about the 99%? The multimillion-dollar Rumkey Family Company is using their influence to procure an agreement that is as ridiculous as the expansion is intolerable. Who knows how the two sides came up with the monetary arrangement in the proposed consent decree? But it's very interesting in its conclusion. For example, as compensation for allowing the landfill to expand by 300 acres in a residential community, a 10-year, $50,000 payment will, for some reason, go to the Colrain Chamber of Commerce. Jeff Rumkey sits on the board of the Colrain Chamber of Commerce. Another example of the Rumkey Family Company's influence over the proposed agreement says Rumkey will give residents a two-year discount on their trash pickup. By contrast, in Tullytown, Pennsylvania, the operators of that landfill in that town picks up their residents' trash for free. And they have been doing that since 1988, when the landfill began operation. The Rumkey Family Company's influenced agreement also says they will give $1.5 million a year to the township. In Tullytown, every resident receives a $6,000 annual property allocation check to abate their loss in home value because of the landfill. The point is that the Rumkey Family Company's used roads consent decree provides crumbs compared to precedent-setting agreements from other waste companies. The Rumkey Family Company revenues are over $500 million a year, and yet, they offer a paltry sum to compensate for the expansion of a landfill that's been on fire for five years in a residential community. Let it be perfectly clear that this information is not an endorsement for any type of monetary settlement in exchange for an expansion. If you do research on the Tullytown landfill, you'll find article after article of what, as we already know, a landfill brings to the community. In 2008, residents of Tullytown had to fight to keep radioactive waste out of the nearby landfill. These examples are just an illustration of the character of the multimillion-dollar Rumkey Company. They prosper while the community suffers. In conclusion, it's been said that there are only two choices ahead. Allow the lawsuit to go forward or settle. But there really is one, there really is only one choice. And that is for the Rumkey Company to be a real good neighbor and abide by the zoning laws of Colrain Township, be thankful for the 75-plus years of prosperity that Colrain Township has given them, and drop the lawsuit today. Thank you.
Kurt Fisher.
Just have one thing. The people that are for this expansion and the people up there, if the new expansion was across the street from your house and you lost $20,000 value on your house, and you can't open windows in the summertime, and you get the smell and sickness, would any of you people be for it?
Bob Cuffey. Sorry, Cuffey.
My name's Bob Cuffey. I've lived in this area for forty-five years, Corrine Township going on ten. I can remember the first time I became aware of the smell from the burning garbage, and it was on two seventy-five between Corrine and Hamilton, the section where you can see the mountain now. We live at Corrine, close to Corrine and Cross County. Now, when I open my front door and go outside in the morning, very often, the first thing that greets me is the smell of burning garbage. I think that your colored areas there that show the people that are affected, you don't have to live at Triple Creek Park or Hughes Road. I think just the fact that it's progressed from Corrine and two seventy-five down to Corrine and Cross County kind of shows that it's spreading. I'm sure those Rumkey engineers are educated people, but they do work for Rumkey, so I think I know where their loyalties lie. The good folks at the EPA that I've talked to, when I've called frequently, every time, like I said, I open the door in the morning and it hits me in the face, they all pretty much agree on one thing. They can't tell you how long that fire's going to burn, or how big it's going to burn. And they'll be, I'm sure, if you were to draw this map up, say you guys pass this and vote for it, and you revisit these things a year or two down the road, there'll be a lot bigger colored areas on those maps, except it'll be too late. I just have to echo the part about the property values and the quality of life. It's all deteriorating because of this. People have talked about taxes. My property values probably decreased with recent economics, I won't go into, but probably forty thousand dollars. Well, as soon as I got my house reevaluated, or revalued, rather, immediately, we passed a school levy and we passed a fire, or a police levy, rather. So my taxes right now are exactly the same as when my house was valued at forty thousand dollars more than it is. So my taxes are just going to go up. I noticed that the revenue streams, my taxes go up anyway, but the revenue streams from this agreement don't touch schools, they don't mention police, they don't mention fire, and schools is number one as far as my tax bill. It's half of my tax bill. So none of this revenue is going to go to touch, or to remedy, any of the things that cause my taxes to go up. It's great for the infrastructure. I can applaud all of that, and I believe you. But as far as my taxes, people talk about taxes, it's not going to really affect your taxes. As far as the folks that work at Rumkey, there's no payroll tax. The biggest impact of a large business in a community is payroll tax. There is none. I noticed that the money that comes from Rumkey is not from paying money on corporate earnings. The money that comes from Rumkey is based on the tonnage that goes into the dump. So I really don't, I don't think the tax issue is really all that relevant. You know, I'm sure infrastructure does cost, but as far as my tax bill goes, this is really not a big impact on that. The other things that, there's been a couple issues raised in the list of bullet points for the impact of the settlement of the lawsuit. One was that litigation stops. If issues come up down the road that they can frame in ways that don't really reflect expansion, and it's negative for the township, you'll be back in court. This is no safeguard against going back to court. Our liaison that requests copies of records and other data from Rumkey, if they go in and ask for something that's sensitive and Rumkey says no, what's the remedy? There is none. And if you deem that it's a valid request and you want the information, again, you'll be back in court. Some of these reassurances and that are kind of hollow. They very likely, very easily, won't work out. I'd like to also echo the part about the vote. I think the legal arbitration arbitrator said that we couldn't put it up for a vote. I don't think this is a good representation of the township and how people really feel. I would think it would have been really enlightening to ask everybody that came up here in favor of accepting this settlement, how often they walk out their door and smell the garbage. Because I heard one fellow talk about five properties, but he didn't mention they'd lived here. I think it would have been eye-opening if you'd asked them, that are all in favor of this, do they smell the garbage? Because I didn't hear one of them say, except for the lady up front, "Yeah, I smell it every day, but I still think this is a good idea." Okay? Finally, everybody...
Thank you, sir. Virginia Waikat.
Hi. I've been a Corrine Township resident for over fifty years, and I'll have to say that one of the proudest times of being in the township was when Corrine Township officials said no to Rumkey. I was absolutely floored and thrilled. I am ashamed to say now that Rumkey looks like they're winning. Don't let them win. Okay? They have not particularly fought clean. You know, a lot of the things that they've done, they've only done them because they've been caught. I think we should make it a hard decision. If you feel like you have to settle with them, give it to them and give it to them good, because you can make it a lot harder on them. It doesn't have to be this easy. As you can tell, I'm against a settlement. Thank you very much.
Jay Welch.
Thank you. My name is Jim Welch. I own businesses and a substantial amount of property in Corrine Township for over fifty years. And I'm very much in favor of the accepting a settlement. I mean, I just can't imagine the generosity and the support of the Rumkey family to offer this. It should be accepted. The township should quit wasting our tax dollars on lawsuits and move forward. This is an industry that is highly regulated. The environmental laws change. Rumkey will upscale all of their compliance. It's a natural growth of things. The EPA and several environmental agencies will continue to place higher and higher restrictions, and I have full confidence that the Rumkey family will comply with all of that. So I won't say too much. I had a whole bunch of notes. If the lady in blue is running for office, I'm voting for her, and, you know, full support of the Rumkey family, and my compliments to the board in reaching this very generous settlement.
First off, I want the board to know that I appreciate the time and effort you've expended and will expend on the Rumkey dump issue. You would not be doing your job if you did not look at all sides of the story and weigh the merits of all actions, including a possible settlement of the lawsuit. This has been an arduous task for you, I'm sure, and the work is not over. I and the members of my family travel the public roads past the dump daily, often several times a day, and have done so since we built our home in this township twenty-four years ago. During this time, we have endured the daily assault of endless garbage and container trucks, including the litter smell and leaking liquids from them, the odors from the dump itself, which cannot be controlled, and are doubled down on by the perfume that is sprayed, and the dust on the roads that clings to your cars when wet. In fact, other than traversing the road after a light rain, the worst is if you are so unlucky as to be behind the Rumkey street sweeper after it's loosened and wetted, the shale clay particles tracked onto the road. Yes, when we moved here, we were aware of the dump, but we were also under what turns out to be the mistaken notion that the dump had just a few years of life left. And then along came the southern expansion. And now, we have the ominous possibility of the thing lasting not only long after I'm dead, but quite probably beyond my children's lifespans. Here's the bottom line for me personally. Certainly, if we continue onward into court and lose the current suit, the things that bother me most about the dump will continue. But they will also continue if the settlement goes through. Some say that our odds of prevailing in court are not good, and that may be true. But if we settle, the odds are certain that my wife and I will not be able to enjoy a neighborhood free of a working dump where we built our dream house, in a neighborhood we love, and where we would like to stay. The only hope we might enjoy the latter years of our lives, should we decide to remain in Corrine, free of these nuisances, is to continue with the defense of the lawsuit. Being a man of hope and faith, I ask you set aside the mediated settlement, and I have faith that ultimately, justice will prevail.
Joe Wurzelbacher? And our last speaker is Kevin Jervis.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I live over on Dry Ridge Road. We moved Corrine Township about three years ago. My business is over off of Civic Center Drive. We've been there for about twelve years. Every day, I drive by Rumkey, and I see the landfill expanding, going higher, going every which way. That doesn't bother me. What really bothers me is the smell. And it's great to get this settlement, fix the roads all throughout the township. That's great for most people. But those of us who live around the dump, especially my five small kids, have to endure the smell. And there's days that we want to go outside and play on the five acres that we have of beautiful forest, but we can't, because it smells so bad. And I just ask of you guys, let's not think about what we can do with this money if you do the settlement, fixing roads and things like that. Let's get this dump fixed. I think that's the majority of the people who oppose the expansion, we're against the expansion because of the smell. And the smell is such a huge deal. If you don't understand, the nights that you'd love to open up your windows and turn that air conditioner off and get that fresh air, you can't, because it stinks. And, you know, for me, I would say, let's go ahead and let them expand if they want to expand, but they need to correct the problem first. And the smell is the biggest problem that I think most of us have. I don't think it's been quite articulated as well as some people might be able to do it. But my opinion is, if you want to go through with the settlement, I think you have to have them control the smell first.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?